Okay, let's call this meeting to order on July 28th, 7:00 PM. We'll start off by, excuse me, 6:00 PM, thank you very much. We'll start off by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Ramirez.
Please join me in this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no invocation this evening, so please have a seat. Moving on to item 1.4, city clerks reporting on posting of the agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda was posted on Friday, July 25th at 2:55 PM.
Thank you. Moving on to roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco, Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton, Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Boto.
Here. 1.6, orders of the day, we have none. 1.7, employee introductions, we have none this evening. Moving on to item number two, council correspondents, this is informational only. Item 2.1 is a recommendation by the Parks and Recreation Commission to secure an architect to design the downtown pop-up park. And item number 2.2 is a Gilroy Gardens report with a little more detail. It's a Gilroy Gardens community impact report, so I believe all of councilor has received that. Any questions? Okay, thank you. So moving on to items number three, presentations to council. 3.1 is public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. We have some speakers this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to call Rosalind Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Rosalind Bowers and I live at the 7600 block of Forest Street. In December of 2024, a large tree branch fell on my vehicle while I was in transit on the same block of the 7600 block of Forest Street. I filed a police report same day and a claim with the City of Gilroy the following day. My car was totaled. After six months of waiting for an answer on the claim, the municipal pooling authority denied my claim citing Government Code 830A that the city were not notified of any dangerous condition prior to the incident. However, through my research of my own, I discovered that there were multiple requested the city to trim the trees throughout 2024 on Forest Street due to falling limbs and debris. Specific requests were made in July and November. The city had more than four months to address these issues so an incident like this would not occur. If the tree had fallen one second sooner, I surely would have perished. I've only been able to recently save money enough to start the work on the repairs of my vehicle, so this whole time I have not had a vehicle. I'm asking the city attorney to please review this claim once again and the maintenance request records so that I can have the funds to simply repair my vehicle. The city is supposed to take care of its residents, so I hope you guys can do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lori Kent.
And so just to be clear, every speaker has three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Lori Kent, and my husband and I live on the corner of Fourth and Prince Valley, and we've lived there for almost 35 years. We are very disappointed in the rush to remove the traffic island at Prince Valley and Sixth Streets with only two weeks' notice, and that notice was just posted on a barricade in the intersection, and it was not agendized at a council meeting and did not, to my knowledge, receive public input. We feel this is an impactful change to Prince Valley and neighboring streets, and at this time, we would respectfully request that post-removal mitigation be agendized for a future council meeting.
My name is John Blattler, and I also live on Prince Valley between Second and Third. I've lived on that street for 28 years, and I too am also concerned about the decision to remove the island at Sixth and Prince Valley and feel that the safety issues were not all taken into consideration and that things were done rather quickly and without considering the residents in that area or getting input from there or doing updated studies regarding traffic issues and so forth. An example is that they took the island out. It looks like they put up a speed sign there that's 30 miles an hour, and I tried to drive 30 miles an hour down that street today, and it's very difficult. It's very fast. I noticed the speed limit on Carmel is 25, and yet our speed limit appears to be 30 on our street. So it's just a concern about how this is kind of rushed and not considering the safety of the neighbors, and we request that this be put on the agenda for the next council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Heather DeRosa.
Good evening. My name is Heather DeRosa. I live on the corner of Third and Prince Valley, and I am also here to talk about the removal of the median. I do appreciate the engagement that councilmembers have had with us on social media in regards to this, and I had been advised that I should refer to the City of Gilroy 2040 general plan as the benchmark for why that median was removed, but the only reference to Prince Valley in that document is a map that shows that this is a collector street, and we disagree with that wholeheartedly. In addition to that, under LU 3.1 existing neighborhoods, it states that in the City of Gilroy 2040 general plan, maintain and enhance the quality of existing residential neighborhoods. You are not. Goal LU 8, support growth and development that preserves and strengthens the city's historic small-town character and provides and maintains safe, livable, and affordable neighborhoods. You did not. Implementation programs on page 60, neighborhood district policy review and update neighborhood district policy based on the approved general plan. As part of this review, the city will convene a meeting of property owners in the neighborhood district areas. When that development for the housing on that corner came in, it was asked in a planning meeting whether or not that median would be removed, and they were told no. And no other meeting was convened for homeowners to be able to come in and speak to that or be aware of the removal of the median. Page 80, M1.4, residential traffic, protect residential streets from excess traffic. M1.6, street safety and accessibility, design streets and transportation facilities that are safe and accessible to people of all abilities, including those with limited mobility. There's a senior living center. I know there's no hospital there anymore, but there's still a senior living center there. Page 89, Goal M5, provide a safe and efficient network of streets for cars and trucks. That speed limit of 30 miles per hour is erroneous. It should only be 25 miles per hour. Traffic calming is another section 5.7. Continue to implement traffic calming, but you removed it. Traffic studies, you're doing a traffic study now, but we requested that a traffic study be done before so it could create a baseline. That hasn't been done. So we're asking that you please add this to the agenda item for the next meeting so that we can be able to meet and discuss as a community the impact that it is having on us. And finally, I want to add, equity was spoken about a lot in regards to this situation, but our street is not equitable to other streets because it is not the size of what has been mandated to be a collector street. Thank you.
Ron Kirkish.
Hello, good, Mayor, Council, and community. I've had an ongoing issue with the ADU on Monterey, as most of you know, and I just want to say that there's been a lot of progress made in cleaning it up, thanks to, I believe, Councilwoman Marks and some of our staff and our police. So it's much appreciated. And Kelly, you responded. Dion, you responded. Terrence, you did too. So I really appreciate it. Terrence, I really appreciate that application that you have for, in the future, pinpointing on my computer and keeping a list of all these things that are occurring in our city so that you can handle it too. So again, I want to thank the mayor, everybody, for helping clean up that eyesore, that blight eyesore on Monterey. Thank you.
There are no more speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Fugazi.
I had one, but I'm unprepared, so move on and come back.
Councilmember Marks.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Just a quick note on Sister Cities. The board has agreed they're going to have a professional PR firm come in and talk to them about how they can communicate their mission and their objectives to the community better than what they're doing now. So that's exciting.
Councilmember Klein.
I would only want to report on the Garlic Festival being back, and it was a great event for the whole weekend for the community, and it's a great start. And I just want to say a lot of praise to the board, the current Board Association, the organizers, and all the volunteers that made it such a special event for the weekend, and they are back, so I had to bring that up.
Okay, Councilmember Fugazi.
So from the board of Visit Gilroy, Visit Gilroy also wishes to thank the Gilroy Garlic Festival sponsors, volunteers, for a highly successful event and for creating such goodwill and energy that'll keep Gilroy on the minds of travelers throughout the year. Watch for a new professionally produced 15 and 30-second videos from Visit Gilroy that are coming out soon. These will capture the spirit of our community and help to promote Gilroy as a destination and a hub for the Central Coast. It's a great event, and I can tell you the media for this, I've been watching it all weekend, including a livestream from a helicopter for 15 minutes from one of the news centers, which was just amazing. So great work to all of those involved in helping promote our city.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, I have nothing to report this evening. Item number five is board and commission interviews. So 5.1 is interviews for open seats on the Youth Commission with future appointments on August 4th, 2025. So the way that we're going to do this is that city clerk will call five of your names. You guys will come up here, introduce yourself, we'll get you a microphone, and then she will call the next five, and it looks like we'll do three groups of four or five. And as I said here, we will not be making a decision on this tonight. We'll be making a decision on next week. So go ahead and start the names.
Alexander, Ashleen, Benedict, Bira, and Diana. You can step forward and have a seat at the table.
So what we'd like you to do is, you know, introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about yourselves and why you're interested in this commission and maybe some experiences that you've had leading up to this. So go ahead.
I'm Alexander, and something about me is I live on Rosanna Street, and the reason why I'm interested in becoming a youth commissioner or council is to help the community and to give back what I have, what the community has given to me and help to have like young minds shaped and see that this is a great community.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ashling. Hello, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Ashling Bundal. I am 13 years old, and I'm an incoming eighth grader at Gilroy Prep School. I'm the oldest of five siblings. I am a twin. A lot of my inspiration gets, a lot of my inspiration to get involved in the community comes from my dad. For the last decade, he's been actively involved in the community. I myself have taken an active approach to also get involved at Gilroy Prep. I've served on the student council since sixth grade and as a recently secretary of student council, and my eighth grade year, I'm aiming to become president. I've taken a part in the Gilroy Foundation Youth Board, which has been a great learning experience for me. I would like to be nominated for the city youth board because I want to be a voice for the youth in my community. I would like to, I would like to help address issues that matter to the youth, like shaping policies that affect the youth's safety and education. I also am eager to meet other students who want to make an impact.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Ben Pham. I just turned 17, and I'm about to become a senior at Christopher High, and I just really want to become a youth commissioner because I've served some time as student council at my school and youth board, Gilroy Youth Board, and also under the secretary advisory committee for the Gilroy Unified School District. And while I do love trying to contribute to the school, I noticed that there's more aspects of Gilroy than just school for the youth, and I was hoping by joining the youth commission, I could help contribute and have a more positive impact on the other aspects that the youth enjoy so much in Gilroy.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Bira Albana, and I am an upcoming sophomore. I have served two years on the Youth Commission, and despite my young age, I provided valuable support on the Opportunity Teen Fair, our biggest event. I'm also a GECA student, so I know to work hard in challenging situations, and I've been introduced to early college life, so I know how to work with people all ages. I have volunteered over 60 hours at a local middle school tutoring and helping middle school students, so I know how to help the youth, and I've volunteered over 20 hours at a local food drive where I fed hundreds of families. I would like to become a youth commissioner because I would like to continue to grow on the Opportunity Teen Fair as well as add some more plans throughout the year so that we're always affecting the youth and making sure our impact in the community is known. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and the public. My name is Diana Diokova, and I really appreciate the opportunity to apply for a seat on the Gilroy Youth Commission. I'm an incoming sophomore at GECA, and I've always been interested in how youth can play a larger role in our community. That's why I've gotten involved in organizations like the Gilroy Foundation Youth Board and AAUW Young Women Leaders, where as a board member, I've had the opportunity to contribute to youth-driven initiatives and collaborate with like-minded individuals. I've had opportunities to volunteer with many local nonprofits as well, such from Rotary Club to One Giving Tree to many more. I've learned, as a graduate of the Gilroy Police Youth Academy, I've also learned a lot about law enforcement and police procedures in Gilroy, and I'm curious about learning more about Gilroy from the civic side of things. Most of all, I care about helping students feel heard, supported, and empowered. I'd be honored to serve on the Youth Commission and help bridge the gap between the city and its youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the first five? Okay, thank you very much, you guys. Incredible job, and you can return to your seats, and we will ask for the next five.
Jana, Jasmine, Jeremy, Logan, and Maya.
Hello, can I start?
Yes, please.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and all attending. My name is Jana Waba. I am an incoming senior at Dr. TJ Owens Gilroy Early College Academy, and I would like to serve on the Gilroy Youth Commission because I feel that my skills, as well as my passion for the youth, would be able to help to, sorry, would be able to create a better community and environment for them and increase engagement and, sorry, I'm getting nervous. Anyway, so I have a younger sister and two younger cousins, and I feel that me serving on this board, I would be able to better, I'm sorry.
You're doing a great, you're doing a great job.
I don't know why.
You really are.
So having younger sibling, a younger sibling and younger cousins, I feel that I want a better community for them, more activities, recreation, things for them to enjoy and to gain experiences and memories from, as well as to listen to issues or, sorry, can we come back to me?
Sure, you're doing great. Sure, pass it on. We'll come back to you. You're doing a great job. Do not worry. Do not worry. Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Maya Sanchez. I am an incoming senior at GECA, and I really want to serve as a youth board member because of my dedication to creating an impact in the lives of youth and both children and teens. I am currently a recreation leader for the Recreation Department in the City of Gilroy. It's my second year doing it, and I work with children aged six to 12, and I was also a member of the Gilroy Libraries TAB, which is a teen advisory board where we helped plan events for mostly teenagers, so middle schools and high schoolers. And working with these two organizations has really led me to learn about how to adapt to different situations, adapt to different personalities, different interests, and to pay attention to what's around me and to what interests people so that I can be their voice and apply it to the events that we put on for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jeremy Vu. I'm an incoming sophomore in the Gilroy Early College Academy, and I would like to apply for this Youth Commission opportunity because I believe it could help me and help my community because I'm the youngest of my family, and I've learned some valuable experiences from my older sister and my older brother, and getting those experiences, I've been able to learn how to take those experiences and what they did and replicate it with other children. So I want to do what they did for me and give it back to the community also because it could help them, and I want people to feel at home and have an ability to like flourish, you know? And I've also worked with young children from tutoring them at volunteering services such as CL and the Gilroy Library, and I've also helped at my church during small groups and youth groups to create activities for them. So I feel that those experiences could reflect here, and I want to create opportunities for the youth because they deserve a lot.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Logan Gill, and I am a sophomore, sophomore at Christopher High School, incoming sophomore, and I want to become a youth council member for many reasons, the first of which is my interests. I'm very interested in government and how the government works, how policies are created, and I want to be a part of that experience. And this past year, my last school year, I took a speech in debate class, public speaking class. I think that really helped me with my communication skills. In that class, we had lots of assignments, including some public speaking assignments, and we also learned about preliminary procedure, and we had several debates throughout the year. And going beyond my interests, I think that I wanted to become a member of the Youth Board because I want to be able to help the youth with certain issues I think that are affecting them, such as bullying in our schools, and I think that that's one of the most important issues that need to be addressed. I think school is a second home for these students, and I think they should be able to feel safe and focused on their education rather than having to worry about school every 24/7. So.
Thank you.
Hello, 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 council and mayor. My name is Jasmine Carrion. I'm 16 years old, and I'm going into my junior year of Christopher High School. I've always been very passionate about the youth voices in Gilroy. For instance, since my freshman year, I've been a class officer for Christopher Gilroy. I've been a freshman secretary and sophomore secretary. I've done a leadership class my freshman year, and I have done ASB my sophomore year. Not only that, but I do go back to the community. I volunteered in the 2023 Gilroy the Month Festival, and I volunteered on the 2024 Gilroy Holiday and Parade Festival. I've also volunteered with my local tennis coach with his younger kids, teaching them tennis as an outreach program, and I've always, I've always been passionate for the youth voices. I want to be there as like someone who can speak up for them because I know a lot of them like really struggle with it. I want to be there to give back with our mental health resources because I believe that it's one of the biggest things for the youth. Since they're going to be our next generation, I've always believed mental health has been a really big thing for them, and I believe that this is one of my biggest passions to do as a youth board member, and I believe that we can be able to do it and help the youth. So thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to pass the mic back down so that she can continue a little bit longer? You're doing a great, you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much. I apologize for some reason.
You don't have to apologize.
Anyway, so as I was saying, I do have younger relatives, and I would like to, seeing the new generation in person has made me realize that I want to get involved and offer opportunities for them to discover what they're passionate about and to have the same experiences that I have had being a person that is part of the youth group in Gilroy. For example, I've attended events like Rock the Mock at Gilroy High, and I also attended different, I'm sorry. Let me restart. As a member of the ASB at my school, I feel as though I could be a good representative and offer, and offer some, sorry, I don't know why.
You're doing a great job. Tell us about your experience on your ASB at your school.
Yes. So as a member of ASB, I'm able to take input from my classmates and my peers, my, both my underclassmen and in previous years, my upperclassmen, and I've been able to apply those and plan better events as well as plan, sorry, events that allow them to engage with their community and to, and to grow their skills. For example, a Week of Kindness, as I'm, as a member of the tribunal, I help plan and facilitate Week of Kindness where students are able to offer kind notes and thoughts to each other throughout the week. They place them in bags that they decorate, and they're able to make more connections and friendships by reading those notes of kindness from their classmates. I'm sorry, I'm just going on.
You're doing a great job.
Long story short, I have personal experience with the youth and with being a representative and increasing engagement within my community, and I feel that on a larger scale, I could make a bigger difference. We could have more workshops, for example, with managing public speaking and speaking anxiety, which I am struggling with right now. These events could offer youth a way to connect with each other and a way to experience all that the city has to offer and, you know, all that life has to offer. With Rock the Mock especially, I was able to speak with professionals that made me realize that I could pursue different careers and go in different directions in my life. Anyway, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. You did a great job. You all did a great job.
I promise, but this setting and everything has gotten me very, very nervous. But thank you so much.
Mayor, before the.
While I struggled through that.
Yeah, questions, questions?
I don't have a question, but you sat out of order, and so ladies, would you just reintroduce yourselves for me, please?
Sorry.
You are, no, right there.
Me, okay. I am Jana Waba, and I am a senior.
Okay, and next.
I'm Maya Sanchez, and I'm an incoming senior.
All right, thank you. And then, and then you must be Jasmine. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask the same question. All right, thank you very much. You got, any other questions or comments for this group? Okay, thank you very much, and go ahead and return to your seats, please, and we'll call the next group.
I'm going to call the next four, so we have two groups of four. Neha, Noah, Parker, and Sean Collin.
So it looks like maybe there's a couple folks that weren't here.
Sean Ethan and Sophia.
All right. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Neha Redraputna. I'm a current sophomore at Christopher High School, and I've learned so many things just from my freshman year. I was in, I was on the speech and debate team, so I know a lot about speaking in public. I was, I am a youth board advisor for the Indian Association of South Santa Clara County Book Club, and I learned a lot about leadership and responsibility, and I'm also part of varsity golf team at Christopher High School, and I learned a lot about teamwork. I would like to join the Youth Commission because I care about making youth voices heard in our city. I've noticed that often. I've noticed that often students have all of these ideas and all of these concerns regarding mainly about school activities and non-school activities that not always do they get represented. And I would love to bring those projects to the perspectives, to the city council, and work on them to represent youth in our city. Thank you.
Great. Great job.
Hello, I'm Sean Collin Diep. I'm an upcoming freshman at GECA. I have a lot of experience in leadership roles due to my previous experience at Gilroy Prep School. I was in seventh grade, I was the vice president, and sixth grade, I was the sixth grade senator. Over the entire summer, I've dedicated most of it into volunteering and helping out the community, such as doing events like working at the senior center, volunteering at the... Give me a second. At the South County Youth Task Force, the Gilroy Museum, and most recently, the Gilroy Garlic Festival for my brother. As a teenager, I know that there are very currently limited after-school, summer, and extracurricular activities and programs available for children in my age group. Since most after-school programs have their participants' maximum age at 12 years old, I would like to work with city leaders to create after-school programs that will positively influence and greatly benefit the city's youth, especially my fellow teenagers and the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and your opportunity and my opportunity to serve with the city.
Thank you.
Oh, hello. Is it fine if I stand? I'm like a bit nervous.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean Ethan Diep, and I would like to continue serving as a Youth Commissioner because I believe that I would be able to contribute greatly to the various projects that the Commission is actually planning to conduct in the coming months, such as Senior Tech Week, Backoffice Santa, and Opportunity In Fair. As a Filipino, Vietnamese, Chinese, American youth, I'm still very passionate about spreading more awareness about AAPI culture and heritage in the city of Gilroy, especially to the teens in my age group. My goal is to help the city promote AAPI culture through events and celebrations since I'm sure the city would enjoy festivals celebrating rich AAPI cultures. And I would also really love for Gilroy residents to enjoy delicious AAPI foods and vibrant dances and events. Anyhow, as of now, I am currently an incoming junior at GECA, but I've spent over 400 hours serving my community by volunteering at many of the city of Gilroy's recreation programs, the Downtown Gilroy Business Association, and various local nonprofits and churches. And just yesterday, I volunteered with my brother and my friends at the Gilroy Garlic Festival, and it was really, really fun. Anyhow, my previous term at the Youth Commissioner, as a Youth Commissioner, kind of felt like I really only got my feet wet with learning how all the different things at the Commission worked, such as serving on the Loma Prieta Flower Committee and helping out with the Last Opportunity In Fair. I really, really would like to continue serving another term so I can continue helping our city with more projects geared towards the benefit and betterment of my fellow youth and also hopefully more on AAPI culture promotion, too. Anyways, thank you for the time and opportunity.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Gutierrez, and I am an upcoming freshman at Christopher High School. I am the oldest child of me and my two siblings, Emma and Sebastian, and I have been around them for 11 years. My sister's 11 and my brother is 10. And I have... Hold on. With that experience with them, I could see how there aren't that many extracurriculars for them, and they're usually always at home, and I can see that they're bored. So I want to be a Youth Commissioner because adding those to my siblings, there are about 10,000 youth in our city, and I want to be a bridge between our district, our school district, and our council. I am bilingual, bicultural, and belligerent, and I can connect and communicate with the members of our community who may feel like they don't have a voice. Adding on to that, it's very important to connect the youth to our city with more programs and more recreational opportunities at affordable prices so that all families, regardless of income, can enjoy and experience many different extracurriculars, such as art, sports, STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, mental health resources, and safe spaces for youth when they're not in school. And most importantly, to prevent bullying and violence in our community, our school district, and on social media because that is a huge part of our time, people getting cyberbullied, people getting bullied in school, and a lot of violence comes with that, like fights. I went to South Valley Middle School, and there were about seven fights in one week over small conflicts, three fights in one day, and it just makes me so angry to see how there's no real resources for this kind of stuff. And I want to implement that outside of the district and inside of the district. So my role as a Commissioner in all will be to listen to our youth, give advice to the council, and I look forward to bringing those ideas to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And any comments or questions for this group? Okay, thank you very much, you guys. As I mentioned before, that you're not obligated to stay for the meeting. You are welcome to stay for the meeting if you want, but you are not obligated to, so feel free to leave whenever you want, when you're done.
I have two left.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
There's two left.
I'm so sorry, I thought we were done. So you guys can return to your seat.
Trinidad and Zafara.
Sorry about that, you, too. All right, looks like you're ready to sell.
Hi, city council members and mayor. Could you repeat the question, please?
Well, we would like you to tell us about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Youth Commission, and give us some experiences about what school that you go to, and give us some experiences of why you would like to be on the Youth Commission.
Okay, so my name is Trinidad, and I go to Dr. T. D. Owens Early College Academy. And some of my experiences that I have that would be useful in this program would be that I'm a Gilroy Police Department Explorer, and this program works not... It works to bridge the gap between the youth and the police department. And so I have a lot of experience with the community because as a group, we participate in city parades, national night outs, and other events in the city. And I think another program that gives me experience to be part of the Youth Commission is... Sorry. Is Community Solutions, in which we have planned multiple events, and one of the most recent event is the cultural event that we had in Morgan Hill, where we had activities from different cultures, and we welcomed people from different cultures. And I think these two experiences give me the opportunity to... They give me the opportunity to be... Would give me the... Sorry. I would love to be on this council to have the experience that I have from those programs, to help the youth figure out what they want, to share these other programs with them, and to find... To make activities, programs that the youth want.
Thank you. All right, great job. Thank you very much. So before I blow it again, was that our last person? Thank you very much. So what I was about to say, you guys are not obligated to say here. I do have one question for some reason, Alessandra. I did not get where you went to... You go to high school, where? Okay, great. Somehow I missed that, so thank you very much. And any final comments for these folks? So just for the public knowledge and for everyone's knowledge, so we have the task of filling eight vacancies on the Youth Commission, and as you guys from the public can see, there's 15 kids here. Clearly, every single one of you is qualified to be on this Commission, which makes it more difficult for us. So I have to say from a personal experience, I know that some of you guys are a little bit nervous, but I'll give you some personal experience. If there was me and 14 of my friends when I was in high school, you couldn't have paid one of us $5,000 each to come up and do what you just did. So you guys are phenomenal. Keep doing what you're doing, and for those of you that are not selected, stay involved in your community and your schools, please. Thank you for coming in. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to the item number six is the Consent Calendar. First, let them... Ozzy on out.
I have a very brief comment I have.
On consent?
Yeah. So you open first?
Okay.
Before we take public comment, I just wanted to mention for the record that on item 6.9, there is a minor change, clerical error that will be corrected. It has nothing to do with the dollars.
Okay.
The light is on.
It's on. Just have to be a little closer.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to consent. Any public comment for the Consent Calendar?
I have no speakers.
Okay. So any...
I would like to pull item 6.8. You approved the final map for Greenfield Track 10666. I have a conflict of interest with that, and I need to recuse myself from that, so I need to bring that out.
Okay.
Recuse myself.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions on that? For Councilmember Klein? Nothing? So then I will be looking for a motion instead of... We're going to pull item 6.8. We're going to look for motion on 6.1, 6.2, 3, 6.4, 6.5, 6, 7, 9, and 10.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Marks. Looking for a second. I have a second by Councilmember Bracco. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Botso?
Yes. Okay, so then, once we've pulled item 6.8, any discussion or questions? Nope, then we'll go ahead and have... I need a motion on item 6.8 in a second, please.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Ramirez in a second, by Councilmember Fugazi for item number 6.8 of the Consent Calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein? Oh, Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mayor Botso?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the record should reflect that that matter is approved 5-0 with Councilmember Klein recusing himself.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number seven, Bids and Proposals. 7.1, Approve the First Amendment to the Agreement with CalWest Lighting and Signal Maintenance Incorporated for Street Light and Traffic Signal Maintenance Services. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There he goes. Thank you, sir. I knew I wasn't projecting adequately. I was reminded of a funny quote there. It says, "There are two types of speakers in the world, those that are nervous and those that are liars." So I always hate to follow the youth because they always make me feel, one, old and, two, inadequate in my work and experience and everything with that deal, but I enjoyed their coming out and doing that, so I hope everybody did. Again, we're here tonight to ask for approval of a contract amendment with CalWest. So CalWest was granted a three-year contract in 2024. We just finished year one of that contract, and that contract was for just over $1 million over three years. While there's an award of $1 million over three years, they are specifically dedicated and designated for each fiscal year, so there isn't allowance to have overlap and excessive use. So what we are looking for is an approval for amendment to address a $77,196.31 over ridge for fiscal year '25. We had some issues with consulting, with the consultant, who had some issues at their place with an employee who was ill, and so we were late getting a lot of these invoices, so I apologize. They apologize. We would like to have been here earlier before the fiscal year ended, but we are looking at dealing with a retroactive adjustment to pay for the outstanding invoices. As indicated in the staff report, we had, over the course of this fiscal year and over the course of the last several months, some pretty significant issues that occurred, including some sensor failures. We had several knockdowns from drivers, drunk drivers or the like, which are pretty expensive in the $20,000-plus range usually, and as well as theft. We had a significant wire theft at one point. And so we are, again, here asking to go back for that point, allow us to pay CalWest, and move forward with the remaining two years. What I can say is that we are committed to better management of our contracts and better management of tracking where we are with our contracts, and we will be looking at this at mid-year to suggest any revisions and adjustments that this may result. The saving grace, I guess, in one instance, is not a general fund-related expense, so these are special restricted funds dealing with traffic. As such, we are seeking that First Amendment for CalWest to cover remaining fiscal year 2025 cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for John? Councilmember Fugazi?
So this is over and above. We usually have like a 10% overage or whatever on our contracts, right? On a lot of the contracts that we put out, we have this extra, right?
There... This is over. We did not... This is... This does not include the 10%. We just came back, so we would have had, over this year, a portion of this covered if we followed the 10%. I don't like necessarily to follow that 10%, particularly if we're in a multi-year contract. I think it's better to come back and not have a year-to-year overage with that, but this covers everything, not everything less the 10% overage.
I think I kind of understand.
We did not account for a 10% overage.
That makes more sense, okay.
Sorry.
Second question. I know that there are quite a number... I don't know if this is associated or not because it's on traffic signal poles, but we have a bunch of signage throughout the city, street signage and whatnot. Is that normally covered under this contract with this company?
It is, and we started to replace some of those. Those were some additional costs, and we have several more locations, particularly along Santa Teresa, where we have those armed mast signs that we need to replace, some that were the illuminated box signs and need to be replaced. We're looking at replacing all of those with just the standard steel signs rather than the backlit illuminated signs.
That's covered in these numbers?
This is covered with this contract, yes.
There's some off of 10th Street, east of... I mean, there's everywhere that's south and west.
All of the mast... All of the mast arm signs, because they have the equipment, the arms, and the capacity to get up and change those out. and this, and the capacity to get up and change those out, this is their responsibility as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you. So this, this is retroactive, going back to '24, with the remaining contract, and I understand you probably inherited this contract.
Sure.
So now that you have this contract in front of you, how confident do you feel that we will stay even if we take from this year to pay for last year? Are we going to have enough to cover the three years, or are we going to kind of have to cover this year with next year and then be in a deficit next year? Does that make sense?
We, we aren't asking, this is, this would basically allocating new money, $77,000 additional money, it would not take money from next year's or this current fiscal year.
Okay, so then let me rephrase that, do you think that we would have to, you would have to ask for additional funding for each of the, this year and next year then as well? Or do you think that in the contract, there's adequate funding for the, this year and next year?
I wish I knew. It depends, again, a lot of what was driving this past fiscal year, several accidents which had complete knockdowns of the poles, each of those exceeding 15, 20, $25,000, some of them, each one of those. Now, we look to recover those from insurance.
Recovering from insurance.
So that's, so, but we have to pay upfront, and we recover out from that, so those are recoverable.
And then that would be put into that fund, then?
They would not be, they would come into general government, but ultimately, so some of those have been recovered, not all of them have been recovered yet, but there are, I think, at least two of those pending recovery with insurance companies. So some of that money will come back into the general coffers. Other pieces of this are not, they are just additional costs that we incurred, because, for example, we had two sensors go out on, on a couple of the traffic signals, you saw, may have seen calls and screams on C Click Fix about, about the left turn phase of those, we had to replace the sensors, those were each in the $20,000 range to replace each one of those, for example.
So then, those are pieces of, right, they're, they're parts?
They're parts.
So where are we with, in your estimation, are we dealing with antiquated equipment in general? I mean, are we...
We're not, I, I wouldn't call it antiquated, I would say there are, there's equipment out there that is reaching useful life. One of the things that Calwest is responsible for doing, and I think we need to hold them more accountable to that, is to evaluate and look at the equipment we have and be more proactively identifying where we might have end-of-useful-life issues occurring, so they're not dealing with a failure, and we're not dealing with a six-week lead time for replacement of a part. So that's something we need to do better with.
And that's kind of what I'm leading to.
Now, what we, I will say this, is that, is that the coming year, we're looking to do a separate contract with Calwest to look at replacing those sensors and not have them come out directly out of this contract, we'll become, we're looking to come back to the council and say, "Look, we have X number of these sensors that are reaching useful life, we should be buying these, we should be at least putting them in the warehouse and having them available when they do fail, so we don't have a six-week lead time to replace those and deal with it." So I think, we see that as really a different piece of this than the maintenance contract, but it got wrapped into the maintenance this, this last fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we'll go to public comment.
I have no speakers.
Okay, last chance for questions, for staff. Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion.
A motion?
Okay, I'm going to, it's a motion to approve the Amendment to the Agreement with Calwest Lighting Signal Maintenance to add $77,196.31 for Street Light and Traffic Signal Maintenance Services, and authorize the City Administrator to execute the amendment and associated documents. So I have a motion by Councilmember Klein, looking, looking for a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a second by Councilmember Marks, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Boto?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, coming up, item number 7.2, award a contract to CSG Consultants Incorporated for On-Call Engineering Plan Review and City Surveyor Services, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, community, this again is a request for a three-year contract with CSG Consultants. We circulated before year, fiscal year-end, an RFP request for proposals, and once again, based on those responses, evaluated those and returned, back to the point of believing that CSG still provides the best services for us in this manner. There is a history there, but, but based on the other consultant proposals, CSG still was the prevailing party in that process. This would include services for surveyor, land surveyor, which is required for approval and sign-off of any and all the maps related to land development, final parcel maps, final tract maps, anything related to that, and that is something that's statutorily required, and at this point, we have no one in-house who has licensure for land surveyor, so this is something we have to contract out for, to meet the requirements. This also provides for a small amount of money, frankly, to cover when we need to address shorting, shortage of staff perhaps, specialty areas where CSG can provide, or just sort of balancing and floating around some plan checks. Again, the vast majority of this money is reimbursed back by the developer side of, of the interest. Some of these, this work is covered by capital projects, is needed for capital project work, which is paid through those budgets, so that can be and is a city-funded effort, but the vast, vast majority of these efforts are all reimbursable back and funded by private. It's just, again, affronting versus, versus ultimately reimbursement back and where that money goes to. As such, we are seeking this as a three-year contract, $150,000 per year for a total of $450,000, and as noted in the prior item, we certainly want to manage our contracts better and oversee the work and make sure we're following through with, with coming much sooner than this time of year to, to talk about retroactive contract adjustments, so I apologize for that as well. Thank you, that concludes my presentation.
Sure, questions? Councilmember Fugazi?
Just quickly, given, I know there's, you've received and, and experienced some of the negative feedback on CSG from some out there in the public, is there any change at all in the, your operating procedures? I know you're now, you're kind of getting a little more comfortable in your position that you foresee going forward, that, that gives you more comfortability in, in moving forward, or just because you don't really have another choice in this, that this is what we're going with? What do you...
It's really not, it's really not an issue of a not a choice. We are, one of the things with this new contract that we are asking for is definitive answer to who is going to be our plan check person for any of our development projects, so we have one or two people. Right now, they show a stable of people. We need consistency with our reviews, and we need consistency with who's doing those reviews. The land surveyor is a pretty straightforward function, but in the rare, rare occurrence that we use them for plan check services, for off-site improvements, for example, or other related work, we want continuity and consistency of who's doing that, so we can in essence train them and have them aware of what we want. So I think that's the biggest change that we're looking for with this contract.
I have some comments.
Sure.
When I came on the council in 2019, I heard all about CSG and all the complaints from the developers and the building owners, and I guess my big concern is that the number of comments they put in a plan check, they use the 90 days, I can understand if a, of a developer or a building owner did not complete what was given to them. My gripe with CSG is that then they are given a brand-new set of comments that they have to do, and then some of them go into three and four different stages of this. I am not for this contract. I do believe that there are other companies out there, we just have to look for them, that are going to help our building owners and our developers get through this process a lot quicker. This council is different, this council made economic development as the number-one priority, and I feel CSG stands in the way of all this. If this, if this council does approve this contract tonight, I'd like to see it go to one year instead of three, because if they can't fulfill what you've just asked of them, I don't want them around anymore. It'll still be a no for me, because I have no faith in this company and what they've done to our business owners. So, um, see, is there anything else that... No, I guess I basically, they, and in looking at the reviews online, they do not have good reviews. We are not the only city suffering from what they have put our people through. So there has to be someone out there, John.
Can I just say a couple of things?
Mm-hmm.
One, obviously, first thing I thought of is, is exactly what you said, is make this a one-year, and we can certainly evaluate where we are. I would ask that you, that you approve at least the one-year, because we have time to deal with that, and we have other projects pending, and we have developers and interests that, that have maps that need to be reviewed, and we need to be under contract with someone. But beyond that, this is, I understand a lot of that issue coming around from the building plan check side. I've worked with CSG, I worked with CSG for years, in Watsonville, for example, doing our building plan check, fire plan check, and they did an outstanding job. I've worked with them in other, in another agency in which, for other roles, and I will say, I was not overly thrilled.
Then why do you think that is? Shouldn't their standard be the same for all cities?
I, I don't, I, you know, I think it's about, one, what they're doing, and again, I think a lot of this gets mixed in with what they're doing on the building plan checks potentially with that, this again is a very limited role, basically doing surveyor, land surveyor work on the final maps, and doing some, if very limited, and usually not any off-site improvement work, basically, or street utilities review and everything with it. So it's a very limited, trust me, at $150,000 a year, this is extremely limited in what their role is. We use our own staff, because our staff know what they're doing and they know what our needs are. But, you know, the, so I keep that in mind, that this is different than that, and I know that, that we're looking at those issues and options. I know there are other, there are other, you know, companies out there, we can certainly talk to them and run if, if the choice is to go to a one-year contract.
So then you're saying that we need them for the land surveyor part, correct? We could do plan checks here in, in-house?
We, in which we do. I mean, this will basically cover land surveyor work if we have a number of final maps come forward, and it really is one of those, if we don't use it, you know, we don't use it. This is just a guess about what we'll need for the coming year, much like the, the last item, which is that we take the best educated estimate of what we think our cost will be. Again, we only included the plan check in this as a hedge in the event that, right now, our, our senior engineer broke his foot and has been in and out a bit of the office, we haven't used outside plan check, but that could have been a much worse situation and required some additional help with plan check services. That would give us a hedge. It's not something we do regularly, we, I mean, we, we try to keep and plan to keep all of that in-house whenever and wherever possible.
So then this is something new?
No.
Because you're talking to building owners, and we've got some in the audience, you know, they'll say CSG is the one that did all the plan checks.
Yeah. Well, and, and Mr. Sooner's in the audience, and I'm, I, you know, if he hasn't put in a card, he probably will, and I know that he was, you know, that he, that he probably wasn't the, the most happy customer with regard to the plan checks and the changes. I know there's some other issues we, we've been working through with Frontier, and dealing with some of their issues as well. So, you know, it, it, what I can tell you is, is that it doesn't matter, to some extent, who the name is, you're going to have some of these issues come about when you have outside plan check, it's just, it's just business.
Right, and just, to defend Mr. Sooner, he's not the only one.
No, no, I understand that, he just happens to be in the audience.
Right, right.
And I've had personal conversations with him about it.
And of course, all the projects have already been completed since you got here, or before you got here, but he's not alone, by a long shot.
No.
All right.
I, I wasn't exactly thrilled with bringing this item in, in many respects, because I knew that there were some concerns ongoing with CSG.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you. So I have just a couple of questions. So when is the current contract due? When does the current contract...
The current contract expired. Now, you granted a Fifth Amendment with the, thank you, with the consent calendar, which basically allowed us to pay for all the existing, remaining 2025, fiscal year 2025 bills. So this expired as of the 30th of June, so we are operating currently under no contract with them. Thankfully, we've not had to send out anything to cover that would have to be covered by this contract at this point.
Is there a reason why it's just coming to us now and not maybe in May, beginning of June?
Incompetence on our part, I'll own it.
Okay. So how many proposals did you receive when you went out for bid?
I was trying to find it, I, I believe we had three legitimate responsive proposals.
And is there a reason that this particular company rose to the top? Was it because of their, they were cheaper, quality of their work, service, which we know is questionable, but, I mean, why did they rise to...
I believe, I believe one was a, was a, was a financial, it was significantly less expensive, one was, and then the other, I believe, was just simply the proposal lacked attention to detail in terms of really demonstrating that they understood what we were asking for, frankly. But I think there's always a tendency to land on what you, the devil you know, to some extent with that deal, which is, at least, we have, have experience and knowledge and understand where we have to work harder at project and program management with them.
So would it be more cost-effective to just do this in, in-house?
I mean, looking at the rates... For the land surveyor, that's the issue. I mean, we have multiple professional engineers, and none of them have received their land surveyor licensing, it's a separate license from that, so it's not, used to be, used to be in the, in the, in the long ago days, if you got your PE, you also were a land surveyor, so it became pretty easy, but they separated those out because they are very, very different issues, and so it is not easy to find a PE who also has a land surveyor, so...
And what is the, what is the additional professional development required to get that?
That is a completely separate component to the professional engineer test, there's a land surveyor piece to that, and it's, it's one of the more difficult, from, from, from speaking to many engineering friends, that, and that's why a lot of folks don't go there with it. Plus, it's kind of a, it's, it's, it's an oddity in terms of the engineering world.
So it's not something that we could offer as an option for professional development, for one of our employees to go through the program, whatever, or, I don't know, maybe it's a seven-year full-time, I don't know what it is.
It's, it's, it's not a, it's not a seven, I mean, it's not a seven-year, I'm not going to say that, it's just finding someone in the ranks who's willing to do the professional development, take the test, and hopefully pass it, or have multiple people, you know, to do that, and that still will take, would take at least a year to do so.
So I, I'm very, I share Councilmember Marks' frustration with this, and I, I will not approve anything over a year.
Councilmember Bracco?
Councilmember Bracco.
Yeah, I'm not going to repeat everything, I just, I agreed with everything Councilmember Marx commented.
Any further comments? Okay, public comment, please.
I have two speakers, Gary Walton, followed by James Sooner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. So I'm here with good news. Two weeks ago, we got the permit for Patice Koush, so we've started construction on that. And so hopefully, we'll have a Michelin-starred Portuguese restaurant here in about nine months or so. I want to kind of talk about the delays that we experienced through the plan check process. The city needs to understand that delays just don't cost time, they drive up our cost and the risk of losing tenants. Every week we wait means more carrying costs, more costs and fees. Our last tenant, after a year of plan check, which was a Vietnamese restaurant, two weeks before we got approval, they walked. Their son was going to do the cooking, he took another job, we were out $60,000 for plans. I came in three months ago and complained, because I saw the same thing happening, that I was afraid we were going to lose this quality restaurateur because of the time it was taken to get this project approved. So in April, I took a trip to Texas, and I visited some expats from California, and as we were going around, I noticed a winery that had the same name as the restaurant. And so I went in there, tried their wine, and I have to admit, our wine's better, so it's, but anyway, I picked up three bottles of wine and a couple hats that had the name on there, and my next meeting with the tenants, I said, "Here, I want to give you this as a gift for being so patient." And he told me, he said, "If we didn't have two other restaurants and a bakery that we're running, we would have walked." I would have lost another $60,000 because of the time it takes to get through the process. It doesn't have to be that way. I've been a general contractor for 40 years, and when I do contracts with my subcontractors, I clearly define the scope of work. I explain to them in writing what the standards of quality are going to be, and I'm firm on my timelines and penalties for delays. Now, I'm not sure how much work went into this contract to do the same thing, but there has to be guardrails, and you should really be looking at what's important to the city. If downtown is a priority, then this plan check company, or whoever you hire, needs to know it's a priority. Don't make it difficult, don't make it harder than it has to be. There's 3,000 pages of codes, and don't make us guess which one you want to note on there. And we had 31 pages of comments. That's ridiculous for tenant improvements. I didn't build a new building, this is just tenant improvements. So, anyway, so I'm not opposed to outsourcing, but I think they need to be held to a standard that you expect excellence, and I don't think we're getting excellence. Is my time up?
Thank you, yes, sir, yes.
Okay. I'd be happy to, in writing, give some other things to talk about.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. James Sooner.
Good evening, Council. James Sooner, I'm a longtime builder developer. I've got long experience with CSG, over 10 years. So when they first came to town, Gabe Gonzalez brought them to town, a former city administrator, and Harvest Park was our first project. So there are some late comments on our plan check that we did not agree to, and city staff allowed us to move forward without making those changes. Post-final map, after we got the final map recorded and the improvement plans in place, it wasn't moving forward. Miritage called me, we set a meeting with the city, we thought the city engineer, but the senior staff had already vacated the building. So the meeting was with CSG, and they made us change pavement sections and curb and gutter and, you know, different things on the plan. So now we're doing a plan check on a recorded map and approved improvement plan. So the plan check never stops, even post-final map. And the only reason for that was to generate invoicing for CSG, and it so incensed me that I went to the city administrator at the time, and I think Roland was the mayor, and explained to him, "Look, this is just running up the bill, they're taking the money out of the TIF, this is not good for Gilroy," and they were indifferent about it. And that was the start of CSG. After 10 years, they've entrenched themselves, and we just ran into problems multiple times. On Greenfield, our current project, we had a three-page document that took four plan checks. And if Jimmy hadn't hired John, we'd probably still be in plan check, because he took a personal interest in getting me through that, which I appreciate, which got us under the agenda tonight. But CSG is like a cancer on this community, they are really, really a problem. And so I wouldn't even approve the one-year plan, and just, you know, he's correct about not having a surveyor, but that can be solved in other ways, but in terms of plan check, just pull the plug, no more. It's brutal. And in the off chance that they do get the one-year contract, we have to limit them to two plan checks. This three, four, five plan checks, it's brutal. As Gary pointed out, time is money, and we can't just, and it's also the frustration level. It makes it so you don't want to do business. So those are my thoughts, I agree with everyone else's sentiment and what was said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one other speaker, Ron Kirkish.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. How many times have we heard this story over the last several years, where developers are having problems getting his projects through the process, and it's cost them money, they've lost potential people to rent their places? When are we going to start doing better? I don't want to hear this story again, and I'm sure most of you don't either. Now, I did notice something else today. We have a new city clerk, Kim Mancera, and I'm so happy. Number one, we stole her from Christina Turner and Mark Turner. So, so I know she's going to do very, very well here, and I want to say something nice about her sidekick, Steven. Steven is a very good friend of my son, John, and his wife. They go back a ways, and John told me we got a winner with Steven. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
There are no more speakers.
Okay. Additional questions for staff? John, can we have you back up, please? Okay. Councilmember Fugazi?
So you made one comment, "The devil you know," which I think somehow means that you think all of these that we could possibly have are devils, and that they're all going to... I don't understand that particular comment, and in light of all of the history that you've heard, and that you've heard for some time and everything, I think it is incumbent upon you and them and whomever to prove that they still even deserve a seat at the table here in Gilroy, to do these things for us. And in that light, and even to get me to approve even a year after hearing this and everything else, I'd have to have some, like, serious detrimental side effect if we don't. And so I think you should at least explain to us what would happen if we did not approve a year, or what you would do as a, you know, as a fallback plan if you didn't get this tonight.
So let me, let me suggest something, and then I'll be happy to answer. We included the plan check, again, as a hedge, just to help us in the event that we needed that. I've heard loud and clear the concerns and issues with it, and frankly, what I really need and what the department needs and what the city needs is a land surveyor. My suggestion is that the scope of this work be limited to the land surveyor. There are, I'm sure, issues that have been, that have arisen from the land surveyor at some point or another, I don't know, you know, but that's a very limited scope and a very focused area and a very limited number, mainly one or two people at CSG that deal with the land surveyor, and that's what I would recommend tonight. We don't need the plan check, it was a hedge, just to basically help folks if we had a situation come up. It's not worth it to deal with that. We can still look at the options and the fallbacks, but I would really go with simply as land surveyor. What I'm going to say is, 40 years into this work, and the answer is, is that no matter who is doing the plan check, there is a friction point that always occurs between the developer and applicant and the person doing that work. It doesn't matter whether you've gone in-house or whether you've gone outside with that. Now, I think, you know, you can always, though, look at limiting, you know, I think the idea of basically setting performance, you know, performance expectations is a critical important to do this issue, but it's a natural point between regulator and the other parties that we just have. We can, I think, we can all, and I know that Sharon and everyone in the shop, you know, at CDD are interested in trying to make this better for everyone. No one enjoys having that friction point come up way too often.
So I have a few comments here, so I'm going to go Councilmember Ramirez, then Bracco, then Marx.
So hypothetically, we say, nope, not even a year. What projects, are there any projects that would come to a standstill then, because we don't have a surveyor or our in-house plan check person is not available? Is there anything that would be delayed at this point if we did that?
At this moment in time?
Right.
I do not believe that there is any one project that is impacted by this. We were crunched with trying to get the two maps that were on the consent calendar through and out there, and that was a large push. We have the maps that are ultimately going to come from Glen Loma, to finish up Glen Loma. We don't have any right now in the hopper, but they could come in with final maps like that. So there is the possibility, there's, I'm sure there are some parcel, a few parcel maps and other things that are lingering out there that may or may not come in at any moment in time, but right now, there's nothing...
On the docket.
On the docket to say, "Gosh, we're planning on going to the next council meeting with the final map," and we have to have that individual.
Hypothetically, we say no to this altogether, and tomorrow Glen Loma will bring something on the docket. Can you outsource or get an independent surveyor to do what needs to be done, survey?
I have contract authority, and the city administrator has additional contract authority that can be done and could be worked on if we had a need imminently.
So there is a Plan B?
There is a Plan B.
Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Bracco.
John, doesn't Hannah Baretti here in town do the surveying?
They are, but, and I, you know, you could list RJA, you could list a number of those. The challenge is, there's an inherent conflict, because they're designing much of those projects, and they cannot review them and design them at the same point, so it makes it a little challenging.
They're not all designing the same ones.
No.
So we have options.
We do have options, there's other firms out there, I've used other firms other than CSG, so they do exist, and we can certainly find those. So I'm not, I'm honestly not concerned about it, if that's the choice made tonight. We'll make do.
And I would like to see in the future this practice of bringing stuff when the contract's expired, so we've got to do something, I would like to see that end, and at least have, like, a few months ahead of time. Thank you.
I assure you it will, on my end.
Councilmember Marx.
All right, and this comment's for the public's sake, because, John, you probably already know this, or you heard about it. I spoke to a business owner, building owner, this, today, and he had talked to me a few years ago about what he was going through, and the person's not present here tonight, which is fine. He had 100 comments from CSG, and when he finally completed all those comments, he got another four to five pages of comments after that. That's my gripe with CSG, because if I was a business owner, I would want to have all my comments come in the first time, and if I had to redo anything, it would be because it was my fault that I didn't get it completed, not because it's like, "Oh, my God, these are all brand-new coming in." That's why I will not be approving this. And when we talk about a land surveyor, if we can't use our own, you know, Gilroy land surveyors to do a project, there's Morgan Hill, there's Salinas, there's San Jose, you know, we need, go out and look. I think we have to send a message to CSG, no more. We're tired of how our people are being treated. Andy, I have a question for you. So to make a change to this motion, would we have to vote on the motion? Would we have to vote no on it and then reword it, or how does that work?
You could do that alternatively, nobody could make a motion, there's no motion made to approve it in the matter of...
All right, then I'm not saying it correctly. If we were to reword what's here, because, I mean, I've heard one year, give them one year, I've heard, you know, we only do the land surveyor and not the planning, the part of it, the plan review, how do we do that?
Well, you can do that easily enough, just if the maker of a motion wants to make a motion, for example, for one year or survey only, that's the motion to be made.
Oh, okay.
And the contract can be approved that way, subject to approval, subject to CSG ultimately agreeing, of course.
Okay.
But at least that would be what you're willing to do. So you can make whatever motion you want in that regard. If the desire is to approve nothing, it doesn't have to be any motion.
No motion, yeah.
Yeah. Let it die. So before you make any motions or not make any motions, are there any more comments? Okay, I just have one final comment. I feel I get a sense of what direction this is going in, but I want to be clear to all of us that, you know, there are, this CSG consultants has contracts on each side of the aisle down this city hall, and so let's be clear that if we deny this, that you are still going to hear about CSG for a while. So everyone is clear of that. Okay, so do I have a motion on item number 7.2?
I make a motion to deny this contract.
Okay, so we don't even need a motion for that, the matter dies if there's no motion to approve. Okay, moving on. Item number 7.3, excuse me, moving on to item eight, excuse me. Moving on to item eight, 8.1, purchase of real property located at 6601 Cameron Boulevard, and adopt a resolution of amending the fiscal year 2526 budget to appropriate $1,185,000 for the purchase from the Water Development Impact Fund. Staff report, please.
All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the public, Keith McMahon, Utilities Director. This item before you tonight is to approve the purchase of property for well number nine at 6601 Cameron Boulevard in Gilroy. Three items before you, approve the purchase of the property for 1.185 million, authorize the city administrator to execute the purchase and sale agreement, and then adopt a resolution to move, reappropriate the money from last fiscal year to this fiscal year for the purchase of the property. So a little background, we're talking about the property over east of the freeway here off Pacheco Pass and Cameron Boulevard, over by the Tractor Supply, Sonic, all that area there. Land acquisition cost, again, 1.185 million, estimated cost right now to complete, we're about 3.9 million to complete the whole well, get it constructed, get it pumping and ready to go, and the funding is from the Water Development Impact Fund, so no funds from the general fund being associated with this project. So a little blow-up of the area, so the parcel size is about one, almost 1.25 acre, that's an industrial area, and the property owner's McCarthy Gilroy LLC. Little background on the project for timeline, the project was originally scoped and established a need for all the way back in 2004, and the water master plan was completed. We did a well siting study around 2006, and we offered on the property in 2008. Was not, it was not accepted, and it kind of stalled there for a bit, picked up the site again in 2016, 17, we did a well site evaluation for just a little bit away, about a block away from the previous site. In the meantime, the original site we were looking at for that area had been developed, and now that's the Centos property. So we picked that project up again... up again in 2017. We, the city council awarded a design contract in late 2019 to actually start, start design on the project. We had a write of entry with McCarthy to go on, on-site and do test well, and make sure the site was suitable. And we'd have adequate flow and water quality and all those, all those kind of things. And a little bit after 2024, when the utilities department was created, we went back, and because of the regulations and everything had changed, we wanted to make sure the site was still suitable for, as far as PFOS contamination and those things. So, we went back and did some sampling, and it still, still looks, looks like a good viable site for us. So, we reappraised the property in January 2025, and then made a preliminary offer to purchase for the appraised value, was made to McCarthy on May 7. So, again, some of this, just some background, the two, in 2004, we identified eight, we need, at that time, it said we needed eight additional municipal supply wells. The drilling contractor was in order to study to do some test drills in 2005. It came back and said, only, we only have two locations that were viable to drill wells. One was over by Forest Street Park, and that's the site of current well three is there now. And then, the proposed, this proposed area that we're talking about now. So, in 2019, council awarded that design. In 2023, we completed the site investigation. Looks like the well will yield about 1,500 gallons per minute, which is a good-sized well for us, be critical to water supply. And then we finished up that PFOS sampling to make sure everything still looks good. The site is subject to some CCNRs. We looked at potentially what it would take for us to get completely out of the CCNRs, but it looked like it would take quite some time. And there's two areas, the commercial areas, more for the routine, having participation in the landscaping, sidewalk, street trees, and those things. And then there's the retail area CCNRs, which is also for the shared areas, for the parking areas, architectural standards, the signal light that's there in the front, and all those kind of things. And so, for the length of time and the difficulty to get out of them, we deemed it, it's worthwhile just to move forward with the property while we have a buyer that's amenable to sell to us. And we have quite a bit invested in background into this particular site already also. So, next steps will be, if you approve it tonight, to purchase, to allow us to execute, allow the city administrator to execute the purchase and sale agreement, we'll enter into escrow, we'll do our due diligence investigations, title reporting and whatnot as part of that. We would plan to close escrow in September, complete the design for well nine likely early 2026. We're about 60% or so into the design now. And then we would advertise the well for the construction in early 26, right after the design's complete. And then, the plan would be to construct well nine, the wellhouse building, all the ancillary equipment and everything by early 2027, and have that, have that online. So, this is a recommendation before you tonight, to approve the purchase of the property for 1.185 million, and associated transaction costs, authorize the city administrator to execute the sale agreement, and then the resolution to ship the money. So, the money was shown in fiscal year 25. So, part of the resolution is just taking that money from there that was not used, and pulling it into this year, so we can use it to buy the property. So, happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Does the design, because I didn't see any design drawings or anything yet on here, is it consume the entirety of the one and a quarter acres?
No, it only, it's only gonna use about a third, about a third or 0.4 acre. So, the remaining will be extra, extra space. The, we originally did talk to the owner about doing a lot line adjustment or a parcel to modify it, and then the cost would have been cheaper. That was part of the reason why previous negotiations fell through. He did not want to subdivide the property. So, this proposal before you denied is to go ahead and get the full property, and we could, we're anticipating we could use it for multiple things in the future. We could either have administrative-type building there for the utilities department. It has a future possibility for a fire station if we wanted to use the part of it for that. So, it doesn't hurt for the city to acquire property and have that property on that side of the freeway.
And so the design is taking that into consideration, I would assume, in terms of, even if we wanted to subdivide it and sell it later on, that, for instance, the corner section of the property is the more valuable section of the property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, you're taking all of that into consideration?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any limitations of, with the design you have in mind, limitations of where you can install the, that well? Like, any part of the property, or there's some spots that are better?
Yeah, so it was, it was, I mean, as far as where we poked the hole in the ground, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference. But, we already were lining it up kind of towards the, towards the south side, towards the south end. And so, how it's, how it's aligned right now, we don't have to change the designing for, because originally what we wanted was kind of that south side anyway. So, we picked up that part to the north that includes part of the parking lot, too. So, so, yeah, we won't have to change the alignment of what we have. What we have at 65% will work good, and that'll preserve the rest of it for, for future use. Yeah.
Okay, let's go to public comment.
I have no speakers.
Okay, additional questions, thoughts? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and entertain the first motion. It's gonna be two parts. I'll entertain it, and look for a motion, please. Approve the purchase of real property located at 6601 Cameron Boulevard for $1,185,000 and associated transactions costs. By doing so, we authorize the city administrator to execute the purchase and sale agreement and related documents.
I so move.
A second?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Ramirez, and a second by Councilmember Klein. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Botso.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. And the second is adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2526 budget to appropriate $1,185,000 for the purchase of the property.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Marx.
Second.
Look, second by Councilmember Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Botso.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Thank you, Heath. Moving on to item 8.2. Approval of Gilroy Management Association memorandum of understanding and adoption of a resolution approving associated salary schedules for the period of July 1, 2025 through July 30, 2028. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the Gilroy community. The item before you tonight is to approve a memorandum of understanding and adopt a resolution approving the associated salary schedules for the Gilroy Management Association for the period of July 1, 2025 to June 30 of 2028. And this is consistent with the Myers Millius Brown Act. For the members of the public who may not know, all of our employees are unionized employees, including our mid-management group, and this is one of five employee groups in the city. We commenced a meet-and-confer process with this group in April, and it has continued over the last few months, because the contract that they were operating under expired on June 30. And so, this is the successor agreement that will follow. This group represents 40 exempt mid-management employees of very different positions, police captain, fire division chief, our senior civil engineers, our rec manager, IT manager, our facilities and fleet superintendent, and a management analyst are some of the classifications that fall within this bargaining group. So, the term of the agreement is a three-year term, like I said, 7/125 to 6/3028. There will be some MOU salary increases through the term of the agreement, 3%, 7/125, 2.5%, 7/126, and another 2.5%, 7/127. There's an increase of deferred compensation benefit. This is a benefit that is paid into a form of a 457 retirement plan now, but available to the person at the time when they retire, and they invest those monies. So, right now, we contribute $30 per month to the plan. Beginning 7/126, we'll increase that by $100 per month to $130 per month, and then 7/127, another $100 to $230 per month. We're also increasing the city's contribution to the medical and dental cafeteria plan by 5%. And, and then corresponding to that, we're freezing the medical and LOO benefit at its current level, and giving a one-time payment of $1,000 to the 12 employees who waive medical. We're continuing our vacation cash-out option of 40 hours per fiscal year. We've added some language for fire division chiefs, who must cover a full shift due to absence, sick or vacation, to receive straight time overtime for working on their scheduled day off. We incorporated the Caesar Shub as holiday side letter, and then other general cleanup language for clarity and compliance. The fiscal impact of this MOU over a three-year period is about $867,000, or an average of $289,000 per year. 70% of that goes to the general fund, and 30% to other funds. The adopted budget, two-year budget that council just recently adopted in June, includes sufficient appropriations to accommodate the implementation of this agreement. So, the recommended actions for you tonight are to approve the MOU between the City of Gilroy, Gilroy Management Association for the period of 7/125 to 6/3028, and then to adopt a resolution approving the July 1, 2025, July 1, 2026, and July 1, 2027 salary schedules that tie to the MOU. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Looks like we have no questions. Public comment, please.
I have no speakers.
Okay, then I think I will jump right to entertaining a motion. I'm gonna have to do two again. So, the most, first motion that I'm looking for is approve a MOU between the city and Gilroy Management Association for the period of July 1, 2025 through July 30, 2028.
A motion?
A second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Klein, and a second by Councilmember Marx. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Botso.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. The second, I will, looking for a motion, adopt a resolution of the city council, of the City of Gilroy approving the July 1, 25, July 1, 26, and the July 1, 27 salary schedules associated with the Gilroy Management MOU, excuse me, with the Gilroy Management Memor, Memor, Association Memor of Understanding, excuse me. Looking for some help here, please, a lot.
I, I move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ramirez.
A second.
And a second by Councilmember Klein. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Botso.
Yes, motion passes six, zero, finally.
I thought you were gonna read the motion again, though, when I moved it.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, 8.3. Consent the appointment of Brad Kilger. Calpers retired annuin it as interim city administrator, and adoption of a resolution approving the appointment of employment agreement. Thank you for taking my position here on the agenda. Go ahead, staff.
Thank you, Mayor. When the mayor asks you to deliver his staff report, you say, yes, sir, and you come up and deliver the staff report. So, actually, I was the staff person who assisted the council subcommittee with the process to identify someone to serve as our interim city administrator, so I'm happy to assist. Due to the upcoming retirement of city administrator Jimmy Forbes, we need to take the steps to fill this position on an ongoing basis, but in the interim period, we need to cover the position with an interim city administrator. So, retired city administrator, city manager Brad Kilger is available to serve in this leadership position. He is a Calpers retired annuitant, having retired in 2019. He does have the skills, education, and experience to hit the ground running and serve in this interim city administrator role. He has over 35 years of executive senior-level experience, 18 years of city manager experience, two cities he worked at, most recently were Martinez and Benicia. And then he's done several interim city administrator assignments. He's well-respected in the field and serves as a senior advisor with the International City Management Association. He has both his bachelor's degree and master's degree, and he holds a certificate in economic development as well. Under California Government Code Section 22, 21, 221H, 21, 221H, we are allowed to hire a retired annuitant to serve in an interim position when there is an immediate need for expertise and specialized skill, and a recruitment is underway for the position. We've become, we have begun that recruitment process, and we have requested proposals from search firms to assist with a nationwide search for a new city administrator. So, we comply with those requirements. The retired annuitant cannot work more than 960 hours in a fiscal year, and cannot receive any compensation other than the hourly pay rate of pay for the work performed by other employees performing comparable duties. So, the staff report contains all of the duties, I'm not gonna read all of those, contained within both the job description and the city charter that will fall into this interim assignment. Mr. Kilger will be paid $151.56 per hour with no other benefits or incentives for the time that he spends working here at the City of Gilroy. The fiscal impact of this is actually a savings, because we do not pay benefits, and so we have the position budgeted, but we don't pay benefits. So, the savings will be approximately $37,000 to $55,500 over the short period of time, and then we'll have a new salary and benefit package in place when we hire a new city administrator. So, upon council approval, the mayor will sign the employment agreement. Mr. Kilger already has, and then we'll continue to work with the council and the council subcommittee to complete the recruitment process for an ongoing city administrator. Attached in your packet is the resolution and the employment agreement that need to be approved to comply with all of the Calpers requirements. And so, the recommended actions are to first appoint Brad Kilger as the interim city administrator, and then adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Gilroy approving the appointment of Brad Kilger, a Calpers retired annuitant, as interim city administrator pursuant to Government Code Section 21221H, and authorizing the mayor to execute the employment agreement. Questions, I'm happy to take.
Questions?
Or you can give the questions to the mayor.
Public comment?
I have no speakers.
Okay, I will go right to entertaining a motion. Okay, appoint Brad Kilger, Brad Kilger, excuse me, Calpers retired annuin it as interim city administrator. Roll call, please. Excuse me, thank you very much. I have a motion by Councilmember Bracco, and a second by Councilmember Fugazi. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Botso.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. A second, adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Gilroy approving the appointment of Brad Kilger as interim city administrator pursuant to Government Code Section 21221, and authorizing the mayor to execute the employment agreement.
A motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Klein, and a second by Councilmember Fugazi. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marx?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Botso.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Moving on to number nine, city administrator's report.
I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Number 10, city attorney's report.
Likewise.
Okay, that brings us to number 11. That will take us into closed session.
There are two items, however, the second one is not necessary, my understanding, in light of the action just taken to appoint the interim city administrator. So, I will only read the agenda item for 11.1, which is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Gilroy City Code Section 17A112. The name and title is Jimmy Forbes, city administrator. So, the procedure now would be to take any public comment, and following that, adjourn to closed session. In closed session, we will then take a vote to remain in closed session, and that becomes a reportable action. So, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, well, we'll move to closed session. Thank you.